One moment.
Okay, Madam Clerk, where were we?
Minutes.
Okay, I see minutes.
Ready? We have Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for September 1st, 2015, and September 15, 2015, and September 23rd, 2015.
Need a motion? Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to Communications and Correspondence.
We have several this evening, Mayor. The first one is the Township Nutley Board of Commissioners has submitted an event application to host its first annual Franklin Fall Festival on Friday, October 23rd, 2015. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'm voting aye on all of them except at the advice of Council. I have to abstain on number three.
We're on number one.
We're only on number one, Commissioner.
Pardon me? Oh, you're voting on one, okay, I'm sorry. Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
There are two places that have submitted petitions to extend the license premises for the first annual Franklin Fall Festival. One is Bella Lucches', and the other one is Jim Dandy's'. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
There are two other establishments that have submitted applications for catering permits to participate in the Nutley's first annual Franklin Fall Festival on Friday, October 23rd. One is Luna Wood Fire Tavern, and the other is Conca Brothers'. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Madam Clerk, I have to change a vote on something. I got a little confused over there.
Okay.
Commissioner, let me just clarify. Number three, you and I had discussed, you were going to abstain on that one.
Yes.
On my advice, so just correct the record.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, just as to number three.
Jim Dandy's?
Commissioner, re-vote on that one, please.
Sure. Should we do the whole thing over?
No, just take his vote over.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers?
Abstain.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now we're voting on number four, which is?
Number four and number five for Luna Wood Fire Tavern and Conca Brothers'.
Right.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Nutley Thriving Survivors has submitted an event application to host our annual walk beginning and ending in the front of John Walker Middle School on Friday, October 16, 2015, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The Kingsland Manor, the historic restoration of Nutley, has submitted an application for a social affair permit to host a wine tasting event at the Kingsland Manor on 3 Kingsland Street on Saturday, November 14th, between the hours of 7:00 PM and 10:00 PM. I need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application to host Santa's arrival at the Nutley Park Oval on Friday, November 27, 2015, between the hours of 2:00 PM and 3:00 PM, with a rain date of Saturday, November 28, 2015, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 12:00 PM.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
And that's it for Communications.
Okay, I believe we have some public hearings, BP. Before I move on to Commissioner Evans, I just want to say that we always forget the people that you really love in your life, and I want to thank our counsel tonight, Alan Jenna Temple. You did, and I apologize for not recognizing you before, you did an unbelievable job with that presentation. You've done fantastic work with this Roach property, and please accept my apology for not recognizing you before, but from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure all the commissioners, Alan, you've done a fantastic job from start to finish. You're really with the definition of a Nutleyite is. We really appreciate your work and your concern for the town.
Thank you, Mayor. No apologies necessary.
I'd like to do the bill less first. Yes, Madam Clerk, I was just getting to that.
Thank you. Public Affairs, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and eight cents. Revenue and Finance, two million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Public Safety, one hundred and thirty thousand, twelve dollars and six cents. Public Works, one hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Parks and Public Property, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Total Payroll, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and sixteen cents, for a grand total of four million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. Need a motion?
Move the bills? Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. We have several public hearings tonight regarding ordinances. The first ordinance is Ordinance 3319, which amends Chapter 20 of our Property Maintenance Code as it relates to the maintenance of vacant and abandoned properties in the township.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this ordinance?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. A question. The fee that will be levied according to this ordinance is levied towards who?
It would be the owner of the property, their property is in charge, so the owners themselves who may be vacating the property, or the bank that takes over the responsibility for the property.
And what is the cost to the township to maintain an abandoned property on an annual basis?
The, well, we don't actually have the responsibility to maintain them, they're still owned by, they're owned privately, so it's the bank's responsibility. We have the responsibility to enforce our ordinances. From time to time, we will have the go-on property, once we get permission to do that, to cut the grass and do basic maintenance like that. And that's generally, when we do that, it's several thousand dollars a year. The fee attached to that, though, actually becomes a lien on the property. The property does not, the owner does not pay that fee, the property is then subject to tax sale.
So a property is abandoned, the grass overgrows, it becomes an eyesore, okay? You're saying you have to contact the owner to go in, okay? But I thought that this ordinance was to make it easier to identify who the owners were.
That's correct.
And I do recall a bill a couple of months ago, for way in excess of a couple of thousand dollars, for taking care of these abandoned properties.
Yes.
And to that note, how many properties right now are abandoned in Nutley?
I don't have the exact number. I would say somebody, somebody, ten and twenty would be fair, but I do not have an exact number with me.
Okay, because I had read twenty-five recently.
It changes.
So we don't actually have, say if a property's been abandoned for a year, we're going in, we're doing the cutting of the lawn, making sure that it's safe for the neighborhood, we don't actually have a dollar figure for that.
It's several thousand dollars. It's not, it's not a tremendously large number, because we're talking about cutting grass.
Okay.
So if we do it, it's a couple hundred dollars a property.
That can get expensive.
It can, it can, it can, but the idea of the ordinance is to actually make it easier for the code office to identify the responsible party.
And that would not be in the tax records?
Well, when that person exits, sometimes when they exit, they don't tell us they're leaving.
And we don't know who the bank that has the mortgage on that property would be?
We, you know, it's interesting, because you would think that that's like a real simple thing, and it's surprising how difficult that becomes to actually get to the person in a bank structure who's responsible.
Okay.
So it takes a lot of effort. The idea of this is to, one, have the ordinance on the books, so that, like, for example, a bank or a mortgage company, when they search, they'll find this ordinance and that responsibility, so we're going to help them find us. That's one. Two, where we have those instances where we know properties are in problem, we have the ability to identify that owner, and also understand, for some of them, the bank takes over that property, so who's taking over the responsibility? It's to help us make sure that, and here's, there's another, there's another aspect of this. If we do not go through the proper investigation to identify the responsible party and give them the first opportunity to fix the problem, if we then go on that property, we're not able to attach a lien. It becomes a taxpayer cost, and we don't want that to happen. And most importantly around it, it remains private property, so the township doesn't have the automatic right to go onto somebody's private property and do that without doing the property.
Well, I would just request of the Board of Commissioners, before passing that, that you revisit it and take a look at increasing the fee to what is the average cost of maintaining a lawn on a property for one year, which I think is more than two hundred and fifty dollars. I could be wrong, but I just, that is my, as a citizen, my right to make the request that the fee be revisited based upon actual cost to maintain an abandoned property, which the town takes on, correct? Once it's identified who this person is, which you said that this will allow us to identify the person, and just to move it maybe from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred. Thank you.
To be clear, to be clear, the fee is a two-step fee. The first year it's two fifty, the second year it's five hundred, and be, just to also be very clear, if a property is abandoned by the owner, and the bank, or whoever is responsible that maintains that property, there are no services that are required by the township's property. It does not automatically become the town's responsibility.
It is, however, a great thing that the town does it, so that neighborhoods are not unsightly, so I want, just to be perfectly clear, my recommendation in the two-step process is to have the first-year fee be five hundred, and the second year be a thousand.
We actually, Penny, just to cut this shorter a little bit, we actually talked about that already in the back room, and Commissioner Evans already agreed to take a look at that as time progresses on this, so we could always amend the lease.
Commissioner, just so I'm sure, we eventually recoup those fees.
Yes, it goes into tax sale.
But we recoup all the fees.
Right, so it would be great to recoup more for the township rather than less, so that's why I'm requesting the increase in the fee.
I understand. We had that conversation.
Mayor, if I might, Mr. Landry, this is a registration fee. We do not remove ourselves from placing a lien on the property for actual expenses incurred, all right? So this is just the first step, and I asked many of the same questions that you're raising out here while we were in the back, and this also strengthens the hand of our legal department. So the two fifty and the five hundred are only registration fees, so it's not that they're just paying those amounts and then walking away from any other expenses. They're still responsible for those other expenses, and Commissioner Evans's office will in fact attach those charges to that property.
Right, and it also, it also, Kevin, what do you anticipate? How many people do you anticipate actually registering?
I anticipate, my anticipation would be few, because I don't want to see abandoned properties. So we haven't had a major issue with it, I think we've had a handful, but it's important that, to your point, which is the reason why we're doing this, is we don't want the residents around that piece of property to live with it.
Yes, thank you.
We want to figure out a way.
And that is appreciated.
To be able to respond faster, and many times, people complain to us that we're not fast enough, but part of it's because we have to secure that legal right to do it, and this will help that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the board on ordinance number 3319? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The next ordinance tonight is 3320, which is a modification of our code around exempt signs under Section 700, and it's basically adding that where you have properties that are subject to demolition, and there's significant work that's going on, that a sign be put up. That provides basically timing around, a start date, a finish date, the nature of the work, possibly a sketch or a photograph, so that it provides greater disclosure to the residents in the township as to when property's being improved, that there's an indication of what that improvement is going to be. Sometimes we find that, once they, once they get approvals to start, there's a significant delay, so this is just really being, doing something easy that helps communicate in the town what's going on.
Thank you. Is there anyone this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners on ordinance number 3320? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The next ordinance is?
Commissioner, you need to?
Move it.
Sorry, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Maybe we can. Can we take the next three ordinances and talk about them together, rather? It's basically every, the next three ordinances are all capital? Okay, so why we'll take them one at a time. The next ordinance is a capital budget ordinance, specifically 3321, which is to dedicate funding to continue to improve our roadways and sidewalks as part of the actions that we have been funding over the last couple of years.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this ordinance? No one? Close the public hearing?
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The next ordinance, 3322, relates to funding for, capital budgeting and improvement for our water utility, specifically for relining of sewer lines, it's the most significant appropriation contained in here.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this ordinance? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The final ordinance is?
Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
I don't want Steve to feel bad. The last capital ordinance we have is 3323, which, this is a, is a capital that relates to the overall improvements that we need to make for the township. We do this on an annual basis, it's part of our capital management plan that ensures that we continue to maintain our debt at a stable low level, and to avoid doing anything that's disruptive to the management of our debt service.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this ordinance?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. Just to clarify, this is bond ordinance 3323.
Yes.
And it is for authorizing the issue of bonds in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, seven hundred, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, correct?
Yep.
Item C, acquisition and purchase of a new and additional postage machine for use by Revenue and Finance, twenty thousand dollars. My question is, is there a postage machine in the tax assessor's office?
The postage machine is thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay, it says appropriation and estimated cost? Okay, thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen. Thirteen thousand dollar postage machine. My question is, is there a postage machine in the tax assessor's office?
No.
No? So would this machine be used by multiple offices?
It's moved, it's used by the whole township.
By the entire township? I was just wondering, because it says for use by the Department of Revenue and Finance.
Yeah, some of the language is because of bond council, so if, because of the fact that postage and the machine itself is in the Revenue and Finance Department, it's listed under Revenue and Finance, and that's really to deal with the structure of our government.
Okay, that's perfectly understandable. It just seems like thirteen thousand dollars for a postage machine for one department seemed a little high, so I'm glad you clarified. The next one is for ninety thousand dollars for a garbage truck. Is this garbage truck replacing an outdated garbage truck?
I would like Commissioner Scarpelli to address that.
And how will this garbage truck be used?
First of all, this is probably going to be a two- or three-year appropriation, because ninety thousand dollars will not buy a garbage truck.
Correct.
So we have vehicles that are recycling vehicles, that are over twenty years old, so they're on their last leg, and where you have parts that we are taking from vehicles that are no longer running to keep them running, it's hard to get parts, so we're planning ahead before those vehicles are no longer in service.
So we're appropriating ninety thousand this year, possibly ninety the next, and ninety the next, in order to replace garbage truck for recycling. Okay, good, thank you. And have we considered lease purchase versus purchase? Have we done?
With the, when you look at a lease purchase, you're going to have to finance that year to year, and we can't bond it over how many years? Five years?
Five. Okay, so you have looked at it, and it works better to purchase.
In our opinion, it's a better way to go.
Better way to go. Okay, thanks. H is a twenty-five thousand dollar firewall server for use by the Department of Revenue and Finance. Is that also town-wide?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. K, improvement, it's four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Improvement of municipally-owned buildings. Could you tell me what buildings that money is being allocated towards?
I'll let Commissioner Tucci address that.
I can answer that. It's all the buildings in the township. It's this, it's this building, it's the public safety building, it's the public works building, it's the parks department building, and all of the other buildings we have throughout the township, and these are for improvements ranging from replacement of air conditioning units, heating units, windows, and anything that's necessary, plumbing, electrical, anything mechanical. Basically, the parks department is the landlord for the entire township, so we need to have sufficient funds available in the event that something happens, so we can respond.
I was just wondering, because the next one is for improvement of municipally-owned buildings, fifty thousand dollars, and I was just wondering why they weren't all lumped together, and why this one for the public works garage was separated out. First one is for four hundred and seventy-two for improvement of buildings. I is fifty thousand for?
Renovation of the roof?
For the roof.
It is, it is for the roof. It's for the renovation of the roof for the Department of Public Works Garage, and that's been identified separately. It could have been included, just the, the nature of that improvement is a long-term, and bond council, at the advice of bond council, it was separated out.
And who is bond council?
Robert Beinfeld, what's his?
Say it again, please?
Robert Beinfield.
Robert Vinefield?
Yes, and it's? I'm drawing a blank on the firm for, for some reason, but it's?
We could get, why don't we give accurate? We could get back.
Okay, if somebody could get back with me?
Well, we'll have Mr. Jenna Temple furnish that information for you.
Hawkins Delfield.
There you go.
Hawkins Delfield, okay, thank you. And the other one is, N is also forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for improvement of municipally-owned buildings, and it's broken out, so that's the same reason as before?
Yes.
Okay. Before you guys vote on this to end the public hearing, I would just like to say that in the future, when there is a public hearing, I sent six emails and did not get a response from any of you, requesting that this bond ordinance that was going before public hearing be put on the nutleynewjersey.org website, so that citizens who might have been interested in showing up to speak for this bond ordinance, might have had the opportunity to review it prior to the public hearing. Now, I was told by Mr. Jenna Temple, who graciously answered me, that he would discuss with you, because it has been the tradition that ordinance or not ordinances are not put on the website until they have been passed. But I'm asking you, I know it's not a legal obligation, but I'm asking you, as I stated in my email, to consider it somewhat of a moral obligation to the citizens of Nutley, to provide the information prior to public hearings, so that people have the opportunity to?
Madam Clerk, let me ask you a question. Is our, is our agenda on the website before the meeting starts?
Always.
But why couldn't, if somebody wanted to see that, Penny, why couldn't they just?
They can always?
Or, what, go ahead.
They would have to Oprah it, as I understand?
No, you don't, you don't have to.
I don't think so.
Well, why couldn't it just be on the website, so that, as most municipal websites have, they have the agenda, and then they have the articles, the ordinances?
All right, listen, why don't, we will discuss that, and we'll see what the board wants to do. Is there any other questions regarding this ordinance?
No, I'm just asking you to consider it, and that, you know, nobody responded to my five emails, so I thought I'd bring it up here, except Mr. Jenna Temple. Thank you.
Well, you know what, just to, just to let you know too, Penny, you know, Alan Jenna Temple's our counsel, and he is the lead, and he is actually, you know, probably not getting paid enough, but he is getting paid to perform those duties.
not getting paid enough, but he is getting paid to perform those duties. I know myself, a business owner, and all these other people up here, you know, that are tremendously busy and trying to make money for our families, so, you know what, we do steer that, and I know that I do, into Alan's hands to answer a lot of those emails.
And I do appreciate that, and you are my elected leaders, so I feel like it is my right to be able to come up here and ask you to please...
It absolutely is, you're right.
On the new website, if you would thoughtfully consider providing documents for the city of citizens of Nutley.
Township.
Prior to public hearings, so that people don't have to drive to Town Hall to get them. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to comment on this ordinance?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Before we just move on, I did not mention, I think it's important to mention, when we introduced our budget back in the spring, and we adopted it, the capital budget in that particular budget at that time was for two million nine hundred thousand dollars. The capital ordinances that we approved tonight are for two million four hundred, roughly thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is roughly five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars less than what we thought we would need for the year when we adopted the budget earlier. So, that was done through a lot of negotiation, discussion with all of you, to be able to reduce the capital request.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We will now move on to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Whereas the governing body of the township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property desires to further the public interest by obtaining a grant from the state of New Jersey in the amount of approximately three thousand dollars, and whereas the grant will fund the Green Communities Grant Community Forestry Management Plan, and whereas the governing body of the township of Nutley authorizes Mario Tucci, Director of Parks and Public Property, to A, make an application for such a grant, B, if awarded, to execute a grant agreement with the state of New Jersey for a grant in the amount of not less than three thousand dollars, and C, to execute any amendments thereto, which do not increase the grantee's obligation. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizes and hereby agrees to match fifty percent of the total amount in compliance with the match requirements in the agreement, and whereas one hundred percent of the match will be made up of in-kind services, and whereas the grantee agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, municipal laws, rules, and regulations in its performance pursuant to the agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey enter into a grant agreement with the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
This next resolution I'm introducing, but I'm introducing it on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, and this is relative to the Nutley Belville Columbus Day Dinner that was held last week. Whereas on Sunday, October 11, 2015, the Nutley Belville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee celebrated its 33rd Annual Columbus Day Parade festivities commemorating Columbus' historic voyage to the New World, and whereas the Parade Committee has a long history of commemorating Columbus Day each year in the Township of Nutley, which is looked forward to and enjoyed by both spectators and participants alike. And whereas the Nutley Belville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its annual honoree dinner, or did celebrate it, on Wednesday, September 30, 2015, at Nanina's in the Park, Belville, New Jersey. And whereas this year's grand marshal is Vincent Miko, and whereas Mr. Miko is joined by the lifetime, is joined by the Lifetime Achievement Award recipient Louis A. Garudo, the Italian Heritage Award recipient, Dr. Dominic Rubino, Belville Woman of the Year, Diane Stanzione, Belville Man of the Year Eugene Romano, Nutley Woman of the Year Mel Priolo, Nutley Man of the Year Alan Jenna Temple, 2015 Renaissance Man Gerard De Popolo, 2015 Italian Business Leader Pasquale Custodi, along with the 2015 Bellis Signorines Kristen Vitale from Belville, and Alana Gabriel from Nutley as this year's dignitaries, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate all the honorees. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
This, this next resolution, again, I'm introducing on behalf of the entire Board. This was a bit of a surprise to us, but this is where one of our own, Mayor Petracco, has been selected as an honoree by the County of Essex. Whereas on Wednesday, October 7, 2015, the Essex County Board of Chosen Freeholders will celebrate the accomplishments and achievements of outstanding Essex County Italian-American men and women in honor of Italian Heritage Month, and whereas Alphonse Petracco has been selected as an honoree for 2015, and whereas in addition to his efforts to promote Italian heritage and culture, Alphonse Petracco is a local business owner, an elected official to the Nutley Board of Commissioners since 2008, a member of countless service organizations and clubs, including Nutley Unico, Nutley Elks, as a trustee of the Library Board, and whereas Alphonse became mayor in 2008 and currently serves as Director of Public Safety for the Township, in which capacity he oversees police, fire, and emergency rescue squad, and whereas Alphonse and his wife Fran have been married for 22 years and have three children, Alphonse, Vincent, and Salvatore, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to congratulate Alphonse Petracco, as he will be honored tomorrow. Congratulations, Mayor. I proudly move the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You second?
I second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Mayor, I know that you couldn't do this without a great family, your dad and a good husband. Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, and I think it's important that, given the fact that you were honored this year, that you help me get an honor next year.
I'll leave that one alone, Tom.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Congratulations, Mayor, aye.
Mayor, Mayor Petracco?
I feel silly voting on my own resolution, but I would abstain, yeah, I should abstain, but I'd just like to thank the Board of Commissioners and everybody involved. It's a great honor. Thank you, Commissioner, for reading that. It's an honor.
Congratulations, well deserved. Whereas the duly authorized representatives from the Township of Nutley in good faith have negotiated a three-year collective bargain agreement with the Teamsters Local 97 and the municipal employees they represent concerning wages, hours, terms, and other conditions of employment for the term January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2015, and by the way, I'm, I'm reading this, this is on behalf of both myself and Commissioner Scarpelli, who both have Teamster employees in our departments. And whereas the, the agreement has been lawfully and properly ratified by the Teamsters Local 97 and Nutley's authorized representatives and approved by the Board of Commissioners, and whereas the Teamsters Local 97 seeks to extend the terms of such agreement for an additional year to December 31, 2016, and whereas the Teamsters Local 97 and the Board of Commissioners have approved and find it in the best interest of the township that the above-mentioned amendment to the agreement be executed, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey hereby authorizes extension of said agreement. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley is in need of purchasing a synthetic turf cleaner for athletic fields at Monsignor Owens and Father Glotzback, and whereas the township will purchase a very top toe behind synthetic turf cleaner with vacuum from the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, a state of New Jersey approved co-op, and whereas funds are available from capital ordinance number 3242D in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey as follows: The mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to purchase the very top toe behind synthetic turf cleaner with vacuum from the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, a New Jersey state-approved co-op. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley through the Department of Parks and Recreation has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for the removal of underground tanks, and whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for 12 months from the date of contract award, and whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants, PO Box 3009, Upper Montclair, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide such services for a sum not to exceed twelve thousand dollars, and whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Veridian Environmental Consultants from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract, and whereas funds are available from account 3214D in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey enter into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants as described herein, and be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution, and be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans? Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Nutley Zoning Board of Adjustment received three thousand dollars from Evelyn Kaluki for the properties at 4 Parallel Street and 171 Bloomfield Avenue for escrow fees for a major subdivision. Whereas the funds are available from escrow account number T15911961, and whereas the Nutley Board of Adjustment has reviewed and determined that the escrow fee is due, is due back to Mrs. Kaluki. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the State of New Jersey, that the above amount be refunded to Ms. Mrs. Evelyn Kaluki, as stated herein. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
The next two resolutions, 28815 and 29315, I will combine with the permission of council, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey that the Treasury be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund overpayments of water charges in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, and overpayment of tax charges for two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents for the accounts listed in here, herein, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas the Nutley Zoning Board of Adjustment received two hundred and fifty dollars from Eduardo Cologne of Body Delight, located at 206 Franklin Avenue for an application, application fee for assigned variance. Funds are available in account C01904903, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment has received, has made a, has reviewed and made a determination that the application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars is due back to Mr. Cologne. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the above amounts be refunded to Mr. Cologne, as stated herein, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Whereas Nutley is a member of the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council, and whereas the Morris County Co-op awarded a bid for road resurfacing contract number six, CAT-E Infrared Pavement Restoration to D&amp;L Paving Contractors 601 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, for the period of January 1, 2015, to December 31, 2015, and whereas Nutley wishes to perform infrared pavement restoration on various roadways in Nutley, New Jersey, and whereas contracts that exceed the bid threshold are required to be awarded by resolution, and whereas funds are available from account number 501806277, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to D&amp;L paving contractors not to exceed five thousand dollars, and that the mayor, township clerk be, and they are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas bids were received for New Jersey Department of Transportation project known as Safe Roots to School, which were opened in red on Wednesday, August 12, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, whereas all bids received exceed the engineer's estimate and project budget, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that all bids received are rejected. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas Hoffen La Roche 340 Kingsland Street, Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted to the Township of Nutley and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection application for Treatment Works Approval, for certification and consent by the Township of Nutley, whereas NJDEP requires that a Treatment Works Approval be obtained in order to retreat and discharge construction, de-watering, and stormwater fluids from the roadside in support of ongoing remediation activities in accordance with sewer use permit number 24630003, and whereas the Treatment Works Approval Application has been reviewed by Dominic Ferry, licensed sewer operator for the Township of Nutley, and found to be acceptable for signature. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Dominic Ferry, licensed sewer operator, is hereby authorized to sign the applicable certification and consent sections of the NJDEP Treatment Works Application on behalf of the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers?
I've known Mayor, thank you.
Very nice of you to come this evening, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, if you want to combine 28215 and 28315, that would be okay, just referencing the amounts in the two different years, I think you could...
282 and 280...
282 and 283 are basically the same.
Yes, I was going to look at that. Um, okay, so do you, would you like me to read one?
Just read, read 28215, and then we'll just, that 28315 is different amounts, but for 2015.
Okay. Whereas the Township of Nutley Police Department wishes to apply for funding of approximately sixty thousand dollars, which, with a match of a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents for approximately project total cost of two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and four cents for a project under the 2014 State of New Jersey Safe and Secure Communities Program Grant, and whereas the Nutley Board of Commissioners has reviewed the accompanying application and has approved said request, and whereas the project is a joint effort between the Department of Law and Public Safety and Township of Nutley Police Department for the purpose described in the application below. Now therefore be resolved that by the Board of Commissioners, that, one, as a matter of public safety, the Township of Nutley Police Department wishes to participate to the fullest extent possible with the Department of Law and Public Safety. Two, the Attorney General will receive funds on behalf of the applicants. Three, the Division of Criminal Justice shall responsible, will be responsible for the receipt and review of the applications or said funds. Number four, Division of Criminal Justice shall indicate allocations to each applicant as authorized. That, I believe, is for 2014, and the amounts for 2015, I could get there. Help me through this.
Original request, sixty thousand with a match of one fifty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents, with approximate project total cost of two hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents for 2015, and you can vote jointly on both of them.
Okay, I move the resolution. Second.
Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye, and we're voting for both, right?
Both, yes.
Aye for both.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye for both. Whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A attached here too, and is incorporated here on, is no longer needed for public, for public use. Rather than read this whole resolution, this is for time's sake, this is for our property room, which, I guess I'll read the end of it, to allow our agencies to put an auction together to get rid of all the unused things that we've had collected over years in our property room. So, with that being said, I'll move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Whereas the following planetary retail distributor, distribute license, liquor license, has not received a tax clearance certificate as required by the Division of Alcohol Beverage prior to the governing body action on the renewal, and whereas in order for the licensee to continue operating after 12:00 AM September 18, 2015, a temporary permit from the Division of Alcohol Beverage Control must be obtained, and whereas the establishment has submitted their renewal application along with the appropriate fees to the Office of the Municipal Clerk, and whereas the licensee must complete an ad interim permit application, which must be signed by the Municipal Clerk on behalf of the governing body, indicating that the municipality does not object to the issuing of the ad interim permit. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Municipal Clerk is hereby authorized to sign the ad interim permit application for the following planetary retail distribution liquor license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers, excuse me. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. This resolution has put the brakes on fatalities day, October 10, 2015. October 10, 2015, has been declared, put the brakes on fatality day by the mayor and the Board[1729.94]
the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley across the nation. Traffic crashes caused approximately 32,675 fatalities in 2014 and are the leading cause of death of young people ages 15 to 34. And in New Jersey, 556 individuals lost their lives in traffic crashes in 2014, and alcohol-related crashes accounted for 27% of the state's traffic fatalities, while 26% of the fatal crashes involved traveling at unsafe speeds. And motorcyclists, bicycle riders, and pedestrians face increased risk on New Jersey roadways as people opt for alternative modes of transportation, and 60 motorcyclists, 11 bicyclists, and 170 pedestrians were killed in New Jersey in traffic-related crashes in 2014. And safer driving behaviors such as buckling up every ride, obeying posted speed limits, stopping for pedestrians in crosswalks, and using crosswalks when walking, avoiding aggressive driving behaviors, never driving impaired, wearing proper safety gear while riding a motorcycle or bicycle, and focusing solely on driving by avoiding distractions can dramatically reduce the number of traffic-related injuries and deaths. Now therefore be resolved that I, the Township of Nutley Mayor, Alphonse Pacheco, do hereby proclaim, October 10th, 2015, put on the brakes on fatalities day, and call upon everyone to put these life savings behaviors into practice to improve safety on the roadways in our communities throughout the state. And I might add to this too, and I don't see it in here, and I'm a little surprised, that texting is an unbelievable, and cellphone use is an unbelievable because of these accidents. Real quick, I remember seeing a commercial of a mom getting a text message, and she says in the commercial, "It was the last text message I got from my son before he drove off a cliff and killed himself." So please encourage yourself to be disciplined, and your youngsters at home to please not text or use your phone and drive. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Louis Menakini, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, be granted a medical leave of absence without pay effective September 15th, 2015 through October 31st, 2015. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye. That concludes our business portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing no one, would you like to address the board, sir?
Alex Rubens, 354 Hillside Ave. That was a very informative and enlightening presentation about the medical school coming to town, and the point that Commissioner Rogers made about the town having a history, like the historian pointed out from the collage, that we have a long history here, and all this development that's been going around in town, where homes that people raised families in, you know, it's like kids and dogs, and you know, it's like having a yard, and the zoning board allows them to have a developer come in, buy up the property, tear down that home, and put up a five, a multi-unit monstrosity that adds to the traffic, congests the schools, and you know, it's like it deteriorates the character and the community and the charm that the town has, and it's becoming institutionalized, you know, to the point of starting to look like Jersey City, and not that there's anything wrong with Jersey City, but you know, that's not what Nutley was, and shouldn't be, you know, allowed to fall down, you know, it's like from its high mark. That's just the comment that I had, you know, in observation, of all the things that have been changing around here.
Well, I'd just like to address your comment, and then if any of the Board of Commissioners would like to jump in. You know, it's really a more complex story than just, you know, saying that, you know, none of us would, we would all prefer the character of Nutley, and I'm from Nutley my whole life as well, to stay the same, but unfortunately, you know, you do have to make progress in life, and things are changing everywhere, just not in Nutley, and some of the projects that have been done in Nutley, with some of these five units that went up, some of the 20 units that went up, and some more, we can't have it both ways. We can't complain about our taxes and say, "Oh my God, I'm getting taxed out of here" and all that stuff, and then say, "Well, we don't want development either." So what we try to do on this board is we try to strike a balance. We say, "Look, you know, how can we balance everything that's going on?" Because we don't want it to become barren or desolated in Nutley, where no one could afford to live here. So when we make these decisions with the Board of Commissioners, I know that we always try to strike a balance which would work best. Now, if Commissioner Evans would like to jump in, but with some of the deficit that we had from Roche, you know, leaving and some of the buildings they knocked down, I have to say, thank God for some of the building that went on in Nutley, because if we had not have that come online when we lost some revenue, it could have been devastating to our homeowners. So Commissioner, would you like to add to that?
No, Mayor, I think you said it well. You know, I think it's a very important understanding that we need to strike a balance. And when you think about the areas, so like in the middle of a residential area, knocking down a small house to build a very large house that doesn't fit into the neighborhood, I agree with you, we've got to be careful about that type of development. But we've...
Case in point, there's the property on Franklin Avenue, I'm not sure what the exact address is, is between Dr. Testa's and Mr. Gerudo's offices there, and I believe it's a 130-year-old building, and a 130-year-old home, and the zoning board approved demolition to put up another multi-use...
Yes, and those things will happen, but that's on Franklin Avenue, right, which is, you know, continuation of where our business district is, and the opportunity to have those services. We've had major renovation and improvement happen on East Center Street, where we had abandoned structures that were neglected, and it actually wasn't driving any tax revenue, but they were just there. But now, if you drive down there, you'll see a significant amount of improvement. So we've tried to be smart about it, but also recognize that those rateables are positively contributing to, stabilizing to a degree, the negative effects of what's happened with Roche over a few years. If you remember, prior to the announcement of the Roche closing, the south side of Kingsland, they demolished the buildings that were there, that was quite a significant impact for us. Without the improvement, we can't tax.
Talk about the south side of Kingsland, they're continuing over there with whatever EPA cleanup and demolition that's been going on at 2:00 in the morning.
You know, just to your point, we just heard about some of the overnight activities we've been hearing about, and I understand that's being looked at to check why that is necessary, and if they did, because we do have noise ordinances that should prevent them from disrupting residents that are in...
And they start as early as, you know, first light during the summer, at 6:00 in the morning they're out there. You know, in the middle of the night, one night, you know, and it's not just the train that comes.
I mean, we can enforce that, and I think Evan just said, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so I'm sure that we will look into that first thing in the morning.
I mean, I'm not right on the property like some of my neighbors on the 300 block of Hillside are, and I'm surprised nobody else has, you know, it's like, you know, voiced, you know, concerns about that.
We are very sensitive to the quality of life issues here in Nutley, so we will look into that. I know I will too.
Mayor, we did get some calls on that, and we did coordinate with Roche, and you know, we...
And then you have those other construction projects on Kingsland Ave, you know, it's like I've got Franklin and Kingsland, and Passaic and Kingsland, that you hear construction continuously, you know, it's like, you know, during all the hours of the day.
Well, we'll look into that and see what hours of the days that they're building, and if it needs to be subdued, we'll follow ordinances. I'll have the police department make checks there.
Okay, and now you have all these buildings that, you know, have been, you know, built up, how many of them are sitting empty, or, you know, not fully populated?
Of what buildings?
Oh, any of these, you know, multi-use buildings that, you know, are going...
I think they're all occupied.
The ones that, the new ones that are up, they're full, and there's a waiting list to get in them.
The ones that are like, you know, some retail and apartments above?
The ones that are retail and apartments above, the newer ones, they're not, they're still under construction, so that would be the south side of Kingsland, excuse me, Franklin Avenue below Center Street, they're not ready for occupancy yet.
Right, because then, it's like with all these, you know, as you mentioned, you know, it's like about the medical school bringing people with families and kids into schools already, you know, it's like the presentation that the Roche, you know, people made, you know, like earlier, they gave some statistic about like .62 kids per so many units out there, the schools cannot take on .62 kids, you know, at this point, you know, it's like, let alone, you know, it's like, you know, they're bursting at the seams. And like you said, we've got kids in trailers, you know, it's like, you know, that's another concern, I'm surprised the Board of Ed hasn't, you know, pushed, you know, it's like, you know, you guys more aggressively on this, because there's a big problem there. Kids are on top of each other.
We're well aware of that problem about the overcrowding, and the grammar schools especially, and we've been working hand in hand with the Board of Education, which has been a joint effort between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Ed to resolve some of that. But just to clarify that too, and please, anyone that would like to jump in, I've actually learned a lot about the school footprint, because when I graduated, although I'm much younger than anybody on the board, I graduated in 1983, and our class size was over 500, and the class sizes have really diminished. What's eating up the space in Nutley is not necessarily the population, but it's all the special ed programs and all the other things that they're doing to shrink our existing footprint. So again, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Ed are working on some kind of plan to address that problem. So it's not that, when we were kids here in Nutley, our class sizes were much, much bigger, and we didn't have these issues. It's all the mandates that are pressed on the school board from the state, and of course the state just hands us the list of problems, but they don't fund the issues to resolve them. So we're working on a joint effort to resolve some of that.
Congratulations on your award there.
Thank you so much.
Saturday is the, you know, another game day, you know, so your traffic resolution would hopefully, it's like, you know, have positive effect, you know, on Franklin Avenue.
Right.
You know, so come to the game, watch the band, the show was really excellent this year.
You know what, and I know I recognize you too, I noticed that the band actually was practicing on the field the other night with headlights from a car.
Yes.
I'm going to ask Ms. Corella, Ms. Corella, excuse me, tomorrow to see if the fire department could have some light towers, given, I've been trying to get to you guys, but I just haven't had time, so when you guys are out there late, it would be, you know, our pleasure to contribute, you know, any light towers if we need any extra ones, you know, we'll get them and we'll put them out on those fields at night for you. So if you want to give Sam your number, this way you guys could work that out, but we, I don't want to see car lights on fields, it'll be our...
Show looks better in the light than the dark anyway.
Wow, they're doing a great job. But thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
This is going to be quick, 135 Lakeside Drive. I just have to say that to the point that Mr. Evans made about the East Center Street, there's going to come a point with this school issue, there are 88 new kindergarteners at Washington School, and that's the school that the East Center Street kids come from. While all these new apartments that are being built may be helping us out on the tax end to make up for what was lost for Roche, it'll end up being a wash if we have to pass a referendum to build new schools. So at some point, we have to look at the two things together, and I just ask that, because it's inevitable, there will be residential at Roche, on a part of Roche, we all know that, there's no denying it. So we have to figure out, given there's going to be new residential, how do we work that into our school system?
That's what we are working on with the Board of Ed.
How does costing the taxpayers any more money, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Mayor, just one comment before we adjourn. I see the Commissioner making a move there. I just want to publicly commend and thank our attorney, Alan Jannatempo, for the outstanding job he did this evening. He made it look easy, and with all the professionals that we had here this evening, and the representatives from Seton Hall, and Roche, and the Realty Company, Alan, you handled yourself like the true professional that you are, and I just want to thank you. And for the entire Board of Commissioners, everyone out there needs to know that everything we do concerning Hoffman La Roche, or East Center Street, or a festival, or anything else that goes on in this town, while we may agree and disagree on specific items, we're always a unified front, and everything that we do is for the betterment of this community. So this has been a team effort, this team effort will continue, and this town will just continue to thrive under this leadership. So I just want to thank everyone for that, and it's an honor for me to serve with them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Do we need to continue, or can we adjourn?
Continue.
We're going into...
We need to go into executive. Okay. Then I move that we go into...
All of a sudden, I'm not so congratulated, am I?
We go into executive to discuss...
Litigation and contract negotiation.
Litigation and contract negotiation.
Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and the State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into close executive session to discuss contract negotiation and litigation. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.